Okay, very good. Next, we have item number five. Public hearing action on a general plan amendment to remove the Lawrence Station, Phase Two, Central Expressway, and De La Cruz focus area. So this is also a public hearing. City manager?
Item five. This item is a proposed amendment to the general plan. As the city council knows, the general plan has identified nine focus areas that represent opportunities and areas for increased development. These focus areas have represented locations where industrial and office land uses can be converted for residential development opportunities. However, since the initial future focus areas were introduced in the general plan, development has changed due to market demand, and the city's certified housing element now delineates where future housing could be located. The proposed general plan amendment aligns with the changing in development patterns in the sixth cycle of the housing element and would remove the following three focus areas from the general plan. Lawrence Station, Phase Two, which is west of Lawrence Expressway, Central Expressway, and De La Cruz. The Planning Commission voted four to three to deny the staff recommendation as the majority of the commission felt that it could still allow for housing development in the future. I will now ask Afshan Hamid to come to the podium to deliver the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor, council member, and members of the public. And thank you, city manager, for that introduction as well. Okay, so we will get right into the presentation. Tonight's staff is requesting an action on a general plan land use diagram and text amendment to remove three focus areas. Lawrence Station, only Phase Two, Central Expressway, and De La Cruz. So the city's general plan has nine focus areas, as the city manager stated, and four of those focus areas are south of Caltrain, and five future focus areas are north of Caltrain. Some of the focus areas have represented locations where industrial office land uses could be converted for residential development opportunities. However, since these were introduced back in the general plan some 15 years ago or 20 years ago, development has changed due to market demand. And then, more importantly, we have the new six-cycle housing element, which tells us where to zone residential uses, especially dense residential uses. So we've already zoned for our arena allotment. So this is a map, and the map is showing where the focus areas are in the general plan. So you will see the three that we are recommending that will be removed are Central Expressway, De La Cruz, and then the Lawrence Station, the west, Phase Two. And then we are keeping all the others. We are still working on El Camino Real, which is right here. That's in process. That's ongoing. And the station area plan. And then we're also keep, we're also doing some work on the downtown Precise Plan. And these are being removed because these areas are not ideal locations for housing because they already have a development pattern that has lots of industrial in it. So why are we doing this? Why is staff recommending that we do this? The purpose is, one, to reflect existing uses and realistic development patterns; two, so that we can provide property owners and developers that the city no longer intends for these areas to be redeveloped for residential; and, three, so that because there's already existing heavy industrial and light industrial and low-intensity office, that these future land uses be consistent with that development pattern that is already there. So next, I will just share some existing examples of what is staff observations and what is there. So this is the Lawrence Station, Phase Two. We've already done Phase One, and that's already done. So the owners, staff did reach out to the owners of the industrial and office properties in this area, and it includes companies such as Intuitive Surgical, and they have no interest in developing residential here. This is already light industrial and public quasi-public, and it's primarily warehouse, manufacturing, and offices. The second example is Central Expressway. And Central Expressway future focus area has a dense concentration of data centers already, and it's unlikely that it would be converted into housing, and it would be incompatible with future housing. And there is a lot of investment into a data center building and a lot of, like, updates that occur to data center buildings every three to five years. And this area is already light industrial, and it's already primarily data centers. And then the third area is called De La Cruz. And in this, staff feels that this is undesirable because of its proximity to the San Jose Mineta Airport, and it would be very close to the flight patterns. And it also has many smaller light and heavy industrial properties, which include auto body shops, welding, plating. So it's primarily warehouses, manufacturing, and it is light industrial and heavy industrial. So there was a meeting on April 16, 2024, with the Planning Commission. I'm sorry, it was 2025, not 2024. And the Planning Commission reviewed the proposal, and they voted four-three to recommend that the focus areas not be removed from the general plan and it be forwarded to city council with no recommendation. The discussion that they had was a robust discussion, and some of the discussion to remove the focus area was that it makes no sense because there would be residential next to data centers. And that the city has generated other focus areas for future residential development, like Tasman East, or Kylie, or Freedom Circle. And then removing focus areas would make it easier for residential developments of focus areas and to require a specific plan before residential can occur. And that removal of focus areas would also allow a property owner to apply for a general plan amendment and rezoning. And then some of the discussions that they had in order to keep focus areas was that not eliminating options for housing in the city for now or in the future, that these are areas that could possibly allow for opportunities for higher density, taller housing away from single-family neighborhoods. These could help make our arena numbers. These could just be areas for data centers to locate as they're zoned with districts for data centers already. These could bring in more affordable housing, and bringing this sends a message that this is, the city is less housing-friendly and more open to industrial development. And data centers could go away one day. So staff is clarifying that the three focus areas that are proposed for removal were not part of the housing element. We are already meeting arena numbers. And then the other reasons is because if we put housing in locations where there's industrial, it could also trigger affirmatively fair housing, where we're concentrating housing near other districts such as industrial. And then the fourth reason is HCD has a very strict criteria for site selection for housing, and these would not meet that site selection criteria. So that is a really strong reason not to put the housing there. So there were some community public outreach, and 20 people spoke, and they spoke on affordable housing and transition of housing to specific planned areas. We did a tribal consultation on January 29, 2025, and no consultation was requested per SB 18. We did the notice of public hearing on April 2 in the Weekly, and then we did receive two callers and one email received requesting clarification with the adoption of the resolution. And the staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution amending the general plan land use diagram to remove the Lawrence Station, Phase Two, Central Expressway, and De La Cruz areas and make the associated text amendments edits. Thank you. And I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Jane.
Yeah, but I guess I don't really understand the benefits of removing the option to put housing at Lawrence Station and Central Expressway. Because office is already there. If you look at Santa Clara Square, we have office plus housing. It's extremely successful. And if we look at the West Bank proposal for downtown San Jose, they have a data set, three data centers surrounded by 4,000 units of housing, where they're using the heat, the waste heat from the data center to provide heating for the housing. So I really don't see, I could see maybe De La Cruz because it's in the flight path to try to discourage housing there, but on Central and Lawrence, I don't see any reason why we're driven only by the housing element. We can go well past the housing element and build a lot more housing in Santa Clara. But I like the idea of building certainly office, not, you know, polluting industrial. And I think maybe we can carve it out in a way that we're not violating affirmatively fair housing by putting people next to polluting light industrial, where there might be hazardous chemicals that use there and such. But certainly office, I don't see any reason why we can't put more housing next to office. And then finally, we're desperately looking for places for shelters. And one option, because we have so many NIMBYs in the city, is to put shelters near, in light industrial areas. So I don't see, I'd like you to explain what the benefit of really removing the option for housing in these focus areas. And then I like the focus areas, like, because you can put in some sort of design restrictions on the properties, like in the downtown, we have the Form Based Code. So, you know, I'm always eager to get data centers to be more friendly to the city of Santa Clara. So in these focus areas, can we put restrictions on the data centers in terms of, say, noise and aesthetics? Thank you.
Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. I read this very carefully and understood that it wasn't part of the housing element, but I would like to hear the argument from staff as to why to take it off. Because I do understand there was quite a robust discussion with Planning Commission. When I read the minutes, it was obvious there was a motion that didn't pass three to four. And then what they sent us without a recommendation was the four-three. So I'm assuming it's the same commissioner's not felt that way. The airport flight plan, I'm very familiar with that area. That's the last place you would want to live. I lived up further, just below Tasman, and it's still pretty loud sometimes. So I can appreciate that. The other, the Lawrence Station, Phase Two, that's the other side of Lawrence Expressway, and it is not close to any schools. And that was my other concern, you know, even though it's on the closer side, it isn't close to schools. There's, there's nothing around there. That's a concern. And it seemed like the center portion, that the conversation was all around, well, if we take this off, we'll have more data centers. That's kind of what I understood from reading the, and listening to the arguments. So I wonder if staff could help with, if that was the ultimate reason it came down how it did. Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Mayor, can I start off really quick? A lot of good questions. One of the other reasons that staff is recommending to remove these is, it's also important to note, we have seven specific focus areas now, right? We've had development in two. And so one of the things is that, you know, we really want to concentrate on the advanced planning efforts that we've already done to make sure that we advance those forward. Also worth noting with the Lawrence Station area plan Phase Two in De La Cruz, those areas are really built out right now and are not likely to see development in the near term. And with regard to data centers and having adjacent uses, it doesn't mean that we cannot have adjacent uses just right outside of that area for the type of facilities that can utilize the heat from data centers, right? It's really saying, in these boundaries, sort of, after time has passed over, I think, 15-plus years, taking a step back and saying, do we really want to move forward with these plans now? And that was really part of the rationale for staff, saying, you know what? We've studied approximately seven. Hopefully with Freedom Circle, with that Irvine project, that'll be three areas. But we have a lot of work to really realize the, fully realize the seven areas that we've already studied. But Afshan, will you take those?
Thank you. Yeah. I couldn't have said it any better than the way the city manager just said it. And then the other thing, too, is that we are still working on the El Camino Real specific plan, which is going to come back to you. And we're also working on the station area plan, which is going to come to you at some point as well. And so it makes sense, in a way, that the way the region is going is we're looking at our more dense housing near transit and near major corridors, where it should be located. Whereas the De La Cruz area is body shops and industrial. Central Expressway is also, already has many standalone data centers. So those are some of the reasons. And also, it's not just the state law, but it's also just, I think, the established land use patterns that have been occurring in these locations, and whether it would be really likely to have future residential in these areas.
Can you also talk about the importance of having an industrial area in a city? Because I know that, you know, as the properties become more valuable, the industrial areas and manufacturing areas are, you know, the acreage is being reduced, and that doesn't help us as a city in terms of, you know, a long-term vision that we need to have a designated industrial area.
Yeah, and I think that that is correct. We had a recent study session or special meeting with council where ULI presented and talked about having a diversity and range of uses that would contribute to the general fund. And many of our, and also, many of our general fund monies come from areas such as retail, such as data centers, such as industrial. And these do help pay for city services. And these are also areas that would use less city services versus housing. Housing tends to use more city services. So, you know, it's really a policy decision. But like I said, we are already working on El Camino Real, which is a major corridor, not just through the city of Santa Clara, but also through adjacent cities, city of Sunnyvale. And it would be a regional connector, a regional corridor. So it makes sense, and it also makes sense to have focused our strategy around the station area as well, and connecting our downtown and letting the El Camino Real connect to the downtown, and then the downtown connect to the station area, and really allowing those areas to thrive, not as three separate ones, but as a continuous area.
Yeah, just to piggyback off that and talk about having the diversity of various areas in your city zoned, sort of an anecdotal study story. I recently had a conversation with the city manager a few cities over, and there was a parcel that was entitled for townhomes, and it had been entitled for townhomes for years, right? And the reality is not every product can be built in every market cycle. And so there was a lot of community sentiment, as why isn't this project kicking off? Well, you know what in that city? That's like the only thing that's kicking off right now because townhomes can be built in that market cycle. And so it's important to have industrial areas, high-density housing areas, because we're going to enter market cycles where your office, your hotels, your high-rise housing aren't being developed, but your industrial properties are being developed. And so it not only provides diversities for businesses to locate, it helps us with our economic stability because it gives us more options and more revenue opportunities. Also, I want to address the question on shelters in light industrial areas. The zoning for shelters and the zoning for housing is different, and there are a number of actions that councils can take to establish shelters and warehouses through temporary measures. And so it's really not zoning. If we're looking for shelters, I think in a warehouse area, there are ways to do that outside of a comprehensive plan and making that an entitled use there. And I know the city attorney has a land use, I think, nuance that's enlightening for this conversation.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Afshan had gotten to this yet, but Xander Abbey's listening and was, you know, a part of the presentation to Planning Commission on this, and he points out that currently, no housing can be built in any of these areas as it stands. And if you have, in a focus area, the general plan currently requires a comprehensive plan development in order to develop residential there. So in a way, and I think it says this in the staff report, by taking it out as a focus area, you can actually build an individual housing project if it makes sense, like a shelter or something else within that residential site. So it doesn't eliminate the option, it just kind of declares the nature of what these projects are and likely to be in the near future.
Good point. Thank you. Councilmember Park.
Yeah, so I'm listening to this. I'm hearing about the planning, and I'm hearing that, well, this is really a policy discussion, but it's not really a policy discussion. It's really a planning discussion. It's really about our vision for the city. I mean, what do we want the city to look like? But more importantly, what do we want the city to feel like? I mean, I remember, and I look at this. I look at the general plan, and the general plan was adopted way back, you know, over 15 years ago, and it was supposed to take us out to 2035. It was a three-phase plan. And we'll talk about, you know, Ray Hashimoto later, but I worked with him on this general plan, and we laid out the areas that we thought in 10, 15, 20 years would be where we want to develop and what we want to develop there. And then in the next six years, after adopting that general plan, we proceeded to not follow any of the designations there. I mean, this is why the largest, if you look on our map, the largest mixed-use regional hub has no housing on it. And one of the problems with that is that that pushed all the housing into other areas. I mean, housing, the REES numbers are kind of like a, an air mattress, which is if you push something down in one area, it's, other areas have to go up, the housing has to go up in other areas. And I don't think that we understand, this is what we were supposed to plan for. I mean, I often talked about Sunnyvale. Sunnyvale has these really interesting, or had really interesting designation zoning like ITR and RTI, which was industrial to residential and residential to industrial. And why did they have those? Because they were noting that it is industrial now, but our plan for that is to go to residential. Right? I mean, having a plan, having these markings tells developers what we'd like to put there, and hopefully it gives people ideas. And I think about this, and I looked at the areas very closely, and I literally used the existence of the Central Expressway focus plan to justify a different project north of 101. And it makes sense to connect the housing that's already there with the housing that's coming after it. Right? And I understand this idea for industrial, but I keep hearing, you know, even in our data center discussion, I hear that office is going away, I hear that, you know, light industrial is going away, I hear that, well, not light industrial, but I hear that uses are changing. And I think that we need to keep up with those changes. You know, I keep hearing things like, and I've heard this for almost 15 years, that retail is dead. Well, it is with that attitude. And I think what we've got to do is we've got to commit to what we want the city to feel like. I mean, I campaigned on the lack of vision in our planning here. It's not just a policy discussion. It's not just about land use. Land use should follow what we want the city to feel like. And this is what I think has been missing in this city. I know for a fact that when we have visitors coming to our city, we often fight to not take them to points of interest in other cities and other areas because, well, a lot of things are nicer in other places. Right? And I think that what we need to do is, we need to stop with that, and we need to stop, we need to start thinking about, what do we want Santa Clara to feel like? Right? Right now, we're looking at fiscally responsible, fiscal response, that's fine. We need to think about that, but I think that we need to also have discussions, not just about data centers, but about retail and about where we want housing to go. I don't see a problem. I mean, I do think that there are places there that I think, well, I don't know who would want to live there. But I think that about a lot of places that have been built up in the last 15, 20, 30 years that I've been in Santa Clara. And right now, I do understand that if we remove these focus groups, what I'm hearing is we can still build there anyway. But at some point, I think we need to tell developers, we need to tell people that are coming to this city to build something, what we'd like to see in those areas. We need to start following a plan instead of simply approving whoever comes with a project. I mean, we need to start informing developers, this is what we'd like to see here. And if we don't do this, then, you know, we're just going to have what I complained about 15, 20 years ago, just a quilt work of parcels connected together by a city, by, you know, a charter. And that, that doesn't make livable areas. That doesn't make the placemaking that we keep talking about. Anyways, sorry, it just, it just seems odd to me that we're talking about policy and we're talking about, you know, being housing-friendly and affordable housing and having areas that mix together. And again, I look at the Central Expressway focus area, and, I mean, it's right next to one of the largest companies in Santa Clara with one of the largest parking, well, several of the largest parking lots in Santa Clara, and to have housing right next to it, I think, would be a game changer, some of the traffic in that area. Like, I understand what you're saying by removing the focus areas, but I also have this opinion as to what we're losing by not designating these areas for what they could be. Thank you.
Councilmember Jane.
I think what I'm actually hearing is, and I don't, you know, I don't begrudge anybody for this, but what I'm really hearing is we don't have the bandwidth to do seven focus area plans. We don't have the bandwidth. We don't have the staff to do seven focus area plans. And what I see, I get Dela Cruz. And what I see, I get De La Cruz, it's under a flight path, we don't want to put housing there. But Lawrence Station, there's a Caltrain station there, there's a Costco there, there's retail there. If you look at the Sofia and the Prado, they're commanding huge rents. This Lawrence Station was a big plan to put a lot of housing there. And if we leave office there near the Caltrain and we put housing there, we, I don't know exactly the acreage, but we could get a mini Santa Clara Square there. But I, you know, I, what I'm hearing is from Xander is that, well, we could just do planned development. We could basically, we're not putting a moratorium against housing, but then it would be just piecemeal planned development if any, anybody wants to put housing there at some point. But what I do want to do is, in a place where you have Caltrain there, there should be a minimum density for housing there. I don't want townhouses there.
Okay. There, those were all comments, so there's no questions. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this issue? I don't, there's no one here. It's 10:12. Is there anyone online? No. Okay. So, Councilmember Gonzalez.
I want to make a motion for alternative one, to adopt a resolution to amend the general plan to remove the Lawrence Station Phase Two, Central Expressway, and the De La Cruz focus areas.
Is this an official public hearing? Okay, Councilmember, can you just first, well, I'll come back to you after, but make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion second to close the public hearing. Please register your vote. And that passes unanimously. Councilmember Gonzalez, you can start again. Sorry about that.
Sorry. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the alternative one, adopt a resolution to amend the general plan to remove the Lawrence Station Phase Two, Central Expressway, and the De La Cruz focus areas and make associated tax edits.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that. And I will say, I heard very clearly that staff would like to focus on the areas where we, as part of our housing, and that makes sense to me.
Thank you. All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Gonzalez, seconded by Councilmember Hardy. Councilmember Chahal.
Thank you, Mayor. City attorney question. Can we divide this into, like, if we want to make a motion only for De La Cruz or only for other area, can we subdivide this thing? The motion, instead of combining all three property, three zones together, can we subdivide into one at a time?
That would be an option, staff. There's no requirement that it be comprehensive. They could take actions with respect to individual focus areas.
Yes.
So, so I'll make a substitute motion to at least make Dela, adopt a decision to amend the general plan to remove the De La Cruz focus area and make associated tax edits.
So we first vote on whether to accept the substitute motion. Okay. I'm not going to support the substitute motion. I believe that we have so many specific plan areas, we have so many opportunities to build residential in this city in areas where we really want the residential and that we need to preserve our industrial areas for industrial and manufacturing uses. If we didn't have 12,000 units at Patrick Henry to be built and thousands of units at Freedom Circle, the remainder of Tasman East, the El Camino Real, the downtown, that's where I'd like to see us focus when the residential market improves, in all those areas that we want to develop and leave the industrial area alone. I don't see a Santana Row there. I don't see anything else there. I don't see another Santa Clara Square there. There are no amenities there. It's isolated and there's no schools there, there's no parks there. I, I just think that we have to preserve it. So I'm going to not support accepting the substitute motion and fully support the original motion. All right, here we go. Councilmember Jane.
My hand was just up for supporting the motion.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
I like splitting them up.
All right. Councilmember Gonzalez.
So I concur with Mayor Gilmore as far as the reasoning and not supporting the substitute motion. I believe if we had a motion to, to maybe keep De La Cruz, where there's a school, there's some parks, there's certain things, amenities somewhat close by, that'd probably be a better motion that I would think to do. But as far as keeping Central Expressway and Lawrence Station there, I, I don't see the, you know, the, we have the resources, the amenities that residents would, would desire, you know, we would have to build new parks. Definitely, even though we're not in charge of schools, I know that this council has in the past helped the school district in getting community benefit and other things for, for, for the district. So I would not be in support of this substitute motion.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cox.
I also just wanted to express my support of the first motion. When we look at our RENA, and it's increased almost 50% over that by 2030, we have an adequate, like a robust urban plan right now for housing. And I think RENA shared with us that in 2023 and potentially this year as well, we are the largest growing city in California, the fastest growing city in California in terms of housing right now. So I, I don't want to approach this from a mentality of we're in a housing shortage. I think there's always an opportunity for more affordable housing, but I think planning that in adequate and correct spaces is incredibly important. And when we look at what brings money into our, our general fund quickly, if there's this need for light industrial office, I think that we have responsibility to capitalize on that. I also want to understand that staff has done the work to put forward three properties that have historically not been appropriate for housing, have not, you know, been petitioned for that. So I, again, am in support of the first motion.
So we're voting on right now. Oh, Councilmember Chahal.
Thank you, Mayor. So the motion I made does not preclude from you, any of you, to make a motion for other properties next time. So it's only for, I made the motion because if somebody wants De La Cruz only, they can approve that. And if they, somebody doesn't want to approve B or C, they have a choice. But if other people want to approve B and C later on, they can make a motion. So it's, it's, it's not a, like, I'm not sure why we are debating that I don't want to make a motion, I don't want to accept this motion. All three properties are different properties. And next time you can make a motion for central area plan, next time you can motion for Lawrence plan. If, if those passes, everything passes. So I, I don't see why is the problem. And, and would we be following at Al Camino area where the business area is very specific, very lively business? So we'll segregate that, we don't want to put that thing under housing? If that's the policy, let, let's do that. Like, we should be doing that. So my motion does not preclude, does not change any dynamics on the council. You can make a second motion for central, or you can make a second motion for combined two properties. I don't know why, why the problem is not to accept this second motion. That's my point.
I'm not, thank you. I'm not, I don't want to support that motion because I want to support the staff recommendation. So now the question is, do you want to consider a substitute motion? That's what we're voting on.
Can we get a motion?
It was by Councilmember Chahal, seconded by Councilmember Jane. Please register your vote. And it fails four to three. So we go back to the original motion of staff recommendation. That was Councilmember Gonzalez, seconded by Councilmember Hardy. Please register your vote. And that passes four to three. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff, for bringing this forward. All right. I'm just going to keep going because it's 10:22. So if anybody needs a break, they can individually get up and go. All right. Item number six is another public hearing, action to weigh first.